Good evening and welcome to the December 11, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law, and to my citizens for America, and to the people of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caputa, Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Parson, Sayam, Lee, Jones, Egan.
Yes, I'd like to take a minute to have a moment of silence for one of our former employees.
Mayor? Yeah, I'd like to express the city's deepest sympathy to the family of Kaye Spring. Kaye passed away today. She was an employee of the city of Florissant for 26 years, working in various departments from 1980 to 2006. Kaye and her husband, John, have lived in Florissant for over 50 years. Kaye was very involved with the Gettymare House, St. Ferdinand Shrine, and Florissant Historical Society. She sincerely loved the city of Florissant, its people, history, and traditions.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of November 27 and budget meeting minutes of November 15 and 20? Hearing none. Councilman Hanky moves to approve the minutes seconded by Mr. Sayam. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is accommodations presented by the Mayor Schneider and Police
First of all, before we start, I'd like to say what I always say, is that we have what I believe is the best police department in the United States, and we have a great command staff led by Chief Tim Lowry, and I appreciate him every day, and so does all of our citizens.
Chief? Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you for your compliments. I just want to thank the mayor and the city council in all honesty for their continued support of the police department, and honestly, without that support, it'd make my job very difficult. Instead, you guys make it very easy for me to run the police department, but I really do appreciate everything that you guys do on a daily basis for the police department. You know, and like the mayor said, we got a bunch of loyal and dedicated police officers with the Florissant Police Department, and a bunch of great people that really do care about the city and care about our citizens, our businesses, and tonight, we're going to recognize five of those officers. One officer received two commendations, and the clerk will read what they've done, but two of the incidents are taking felons off the street and seizing guns and getting warrants issued, felony warrants. We appreciate, obviously, the hard work and effort that they do there, putting themselves out there every day and risking their lives to arrest these serious felons. And then the other incident that we're going to recognize this evening is just the hard work of two of our traffic officers in solving a automobile accident where it was a fatal accident where the driver of the other vehicle left the scene, and after several months of investigation, they were able to put that case to close and get warrants issued in that case. So I appreciate all their hard work and effort, and I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
Okay, the first commendation is for Officer Kiefer and Officer Feldman. On December 9, 2016, Officer Kiefer and Officer Feldman were given a follow-up investigation of a leaving the scene accident where one of the drivers fled the scene on foot. As a result of that accident, one of the people involved in the accident died as a result of their injuries two months later. As both officers conducted detailed interviews with witnesses and other drivers, they were able to identify the suspect that fled the scene. The suspect was subsequently arrested and charged with leaving the scene of a motor vehicle accident. As their investigation continued, they were able to supply a grand jury with sufficient evidence that an indictment was returned charging the suspect with second-degree involuntary manslaughter. Due to their diligence and determined investigation, a dangerous driver has been removed from the streets. They are hereby officially commended. Detective Osmer and Detective Schluter, on October 26, 2017, Detective Osmer and Detective Schluter were conducting a close patrol near Libburg and New Halls Ferry Road where they observed a narcotics transaction. Following an investigative stop of the suspect, a vehicle suspects in a vehicle near New Halls Ferry and Dunn Road, detectives observed the driver to have a handgun. When he was ordered to drop the weapon, he threw the weapon to the passenger, who also dropped the weapon, and both suspects fled on foot. Following a short foot pursuit, both suspects were taken into custody. A search of the vehicles revealed heroin, approximately 28 ounces of ecstasy, and a loaded Smith &amp; Wesson handgun. One of the suspects was found to be a convicted felon. Due to their excellent police work, two dangerous armed drug dealers have been removed from the streets of Florissant. They Detective Schluter and Officer Malik, on July 16, 2017, Detective Schluter and Officer Malik were assigned to a 911 call of careless and imprudent driver near Libburg and New Halls Ferry Road. The vehicle became involved in an injury accident and fled the scene. The officers observed the vehicle and attempted to stop the vehicle that was driving into oncoming traffic. Vehicles struck another vehicle head-on where another driver was injured. As they attempted to arrest the erratic driver, he resisted and pulled a handgun from his waistband intending to shoot both officers. Both officers were able to disarm him, and it was necessary to utilize a taser to finally subdue the subject. Their follow-up investigation revealed that the vehicle was driving, he was driving, was reported stolen to another department. They also discovered that the suspect was convicted felon and in possession of crack cocaine, heroin, and marijuana. This case was presented to the U.S. Attorney's Office for federal criminal prosecution. Because of their quick thinking and actions, a dangerous armed felon was removed from the streets of Florissant. For Detective Schluter and Officer Malik's excellent police work and stressful, dangerous situation, they are hereby officially commended.
Chief Tim Lowry.
Do you want to say something first?
So Eddie's Heroes, of course, everybody, I think everybody knows Eddie. I don't think there's anybody more popular in the police department or the city than Eddie. And so what, actually Officer Mann has come up with the Eddie's Heroes Award, and what we want to do is we want to recognize a youth in our community, or someone in our community that's just one above and beyond what they normally would do to either help the police department or help our city, our citizens. So tonight, we're going to recognize one young lady this evening, and I'll let the mayor.
Yeah, Erin Schwartz, she's a server at Sacred Heart Parish. She's active in Girl Scouts and has collected for April showers team and scouting for food for the last four years, and Erin participates in North County Choir, singing at St. Ferdinand Shrine and the VA Home, and she has volunteered her family at Cross, with her family at Costco Soup Kitchen in East St. Louis for the last three Christmas dinners. Erin has a reputation as always being the first to help when someone is in need or hurt, and is known for her generosity and thoughtfulness. Erin?
They were able to buy $98 gift cards to, for the police officers to go around and stop violators for various minor traffic violations or violations, and instead of giving them a regular traffic summons, which they were most likely expecting, they received a $100 gift card for a area store and a summons that was prepared by the local churches. So it's a great program for the police department to reach out, and obviously, it's not something for the motorists to expect to receive a $100 gift card, so it's great for the officers as well.
Chief, did you want to add anything?
No, actually, that was pretty much it, but you know, it really is a great idea. This actually came out of NCCU and the meetings that we had with them really since August of 14, discussing about relations with race relations, and it was something that came out of those meetings that we've had on a monthly basis ever since then, and it really was the church's idea, and it's really worked out to be such a great program to show that, you know, the other side of police officers and to show that, you know, we do care, and honestly, it's the reactions that we get from people have been unbelievable. I mean, people will cry, they'll hug, they'll ask us if they can hug us, are the officers, not myself, but, and it's just been just a great, probably nobody wants to hug me. No, just kidding. No, it's just been a great public relations thing, and it's been great for the community, and honestly, I think the officers get energized even more than sometimes even the citizens, so it's been a great program for ours, and I'd just like to thank NCCU for coming up with the idea.
At this time, I'm going to amend the agenda. Mayor, you can stay right there. We were going to do the certificate of appreciation for Ken Fowler, presented by Mayor Schneider. Oh, I get you too. Well, this is an honor for me because my father got to serve with Mr. Fowler.
Actually, it was written as a proclamation instead of a certificate. Mayor, do you want me to read it? Should I start reading it? May I read? Whereas Ken Fowler has been a Florissant resident for over 50 years and served as councilman for Ward III for 11 years from 1968 through 1979. Whereas while serving as a councilman, Ken was most proud of getting the pension plan approved for the city employees and of the construction of the current city hall, John F. Kennedy Community Center, and the James J. Egan Civic Center during his tenure on the city council. Whereas after retiring, Mr. Fowler worked part-time for the city as a park ranger in June of 1998. At the urging of Mayor Egan, he transferred to the Parks and Recreation Staff, where he served until August 2017. Whereas Ken encouraged all three mayors under the 1963 charter and has been a cheerleader for everything Florissant is all about. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the city of Florissant, Missouri, do hereby wish to extend his heartfelt appreciation to Ken Fowler and for his service and dedication to the city of Florissant.
I think Jackie has known Ken longer than any of us, probably when you were a little girl, so your dad and him started together.
I know. I was just a little girl when, when my father served with Ken, so it's a great honor for me just to stand up here with you.
I don't know much to say. I was lucky to serve 12 years here, and I think I've been in this town for about 50, maybe a little over 50, and they keep trying to get me out of it, and I keep coming back. I keep buying a house in Florissant, so he keeps trying me back, the mayor, but now we're friends. But I really love the place. Florissant's been our family loves it. It's just, it's been super, it really has, and I think the people in this town enjoyed themselves too, and I think when we were on the council, all we thought about was you guys, making sure that the people love what we did, and I think most of them do. This building, we enjoyed. It just, just was so neat to do, and I don't know, it's just, I wish some of them were still here, but unfortunately, Don Bond, who was my great friend, St. Louis County Councilman, I really miss him, and this guy here I miss. We go back a long way to, I was not, before I became mayor, buddy, I knew him a long time. Thank you.
Well, Jackie's standing before you and everyone is half a century of representatives for Ward III. Ken was elected in 1968. I followed him in 1979, and Joe was elected in 2011 and still serves. Half a century, only three people. The closest next ward is five people, and one and five, and all the rest of the wards are far more than that, so that's incredible. So we're going to have a picture of just the three of us here now, okay? Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Take your plaque.
Did I miss something?
Okay, here you go. Good evening.
Good evening to you as well. I have a short, brief handout for each of you that you all have. Legislative filing begins December 1st, so there's been seven days of filing. There's been over 250 House bills already introduced and about 300 Senate bills already introduced. I have broken it down to municipal bills. I have highlighted in red bills that may be of interest to the city of Florissant specifically, but there's also your tax financing legislation that continues to come up and several other things. I am asked about the prevailing wage law from several councilmen continuously, so I have highlighted those in purple. If you briefly go to make this as quick a presentation as possible, you can read all the different bills, but basically, if you go to House Bill 1401, habitability of rental property, Representative DeGroot, he is a former councilman from the city of Chesterfield that deals with habitability and whether a house is maintainable. I have talked to several councilmen several times about House Bill 1508, and then you can also go to House Bill 1510, but this is by Representative Cross. He's done it the last several years. This is the bill that I report to you in May that he tries to make it illegal for your business license for individuals that lease or rent properties that you so diligently worked on. These are the two types of bills that he continues to try and sneaks on about four or five bills at the end of session. So we'll need to be watching that one very carefully too, and I'll make sure you're aware of when the hearing is because we had possibly discussed personally coming up and telling the story of the city of Florissant like you did at the municipal conference to articulate the message better. I have put Senate Bill 553 by Senator Dixon from Greene County. It's his last year. This is kind of the municipal government bill, which will probably be at the end of session, about a 200 to 300-page bill. This will be the bill I will be following that possibly could get amendments the last three to four weeks, as I always tell, so that's why I kind of threw that bill in there, just for your reading pleasure, I guess you can say at this time. I put Senate Bill 780 in there. This is a piece of legislation by a senator from Kansas City, and it only pertains to Kansas City, but it allows certain people to enter abandoned property to secure it, removes trash and graffiti, and maintain the grounds, and provides immunity from civil and criminal liability. The last two issues that I have touched upon, I know your mayor has sat on the Transportation Task Force, and the big issue to all residents of the state is transportation funding. Basically, after we allowed the state of Missouri in 1998 to bond a lot of road projects, you have seen all those projects, and the investment in new infrastructure in Missouri is pretty much very slim or at a halt because all the money is going for maintenance and upkeep. There is a push, a continual push, to increase revenues from the state of Missouri. Senator Igle, who was adamantly opposed to it, has an idea of how to solve all these states' financial problems with the bill, and he wants to increase the gas tax by six cents a gallon, but if you look at Senate Bill 34, that's by Senator Schatz that chaired the commission that the mayor sat on representing the municipalities throughout the year, and he is wanting to push a 10% or a 10-cent gas increase to generate revenue. All the political subdivisions around the state and a lot of people realize the need for infrastructure improvements, so we will be following that as well for the input of the political subdivisions throughout the state. I know you've got a large agenda. I just wanted to touch base before session, and as you can see, with just seven days of introduction of bills, 500 bills already being introduced, when some things don't get passed, you always see the bills that want to curtail political subdivisions' ability to represent their constituencies always tend to be front and center in the ones that pass, so it'll most likely be a lively session for those issues as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice holiday season.
You too. Merry Christmas. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue not necessarily on the agenda this evening. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer period, but we would be happy to speak with you after the meeting. We have Mark Bellman. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is-
You're going to have to move that mic up.
I'm sorry?
You're going to have to move up the mic. There we go. Thank you.
My name is Mark Bellman, 7:40 Lindsay Lane. I'm here this evening to introduce the superintendent of the Hazelwood School District, Dr. Collins Hart. Also, we do have a brochure that I'll give to the attorney to distribute to each and every one of you. With that, Dr. Collins Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman, and good evening.
Good evening.
As Mr. Bellman said, I'm Dr. Nettie Collins Hart, the proud superintendent of 18,000 students in Hazelwood School District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I bring you greetings on behalf of our Board of Education and our students. I'm Mayor Schneider, members of the Florissant City Council. I'd like to share briefly, in the time that I have, what is in those folders that you're seeing, and solicit your support, advocacy, ambassadorship, and participation in Hazelwood School District. I'd like to report that we remain fully accredited with a balanced budget. We have an increase in scholarship dollars, and two major initiatives that I'd like to bring to your attention that are highlighted in this document are that the district is about to engage in strategic planning. We ask the question, what do we want our schools to look like and be like, and what services do we want to provide to our students by the year 2022? So I solicit your input in focus groups, in forums, and serving on committees. The other thing that I would like to mention is that the district will be engaging in a look at redistricting. We know that anytime you're moving children around, that's not a happy time. However, we believe that we're at a point, after having not looked at redistricting for 10 years, that some of our schools are unevenly balanced. We believe we're doing it as well as you can do it, in that we're taking some time. 1718, this school year, we're studying where the students are living. We're looking at live births. We're looking at projections. Next year, 1819, we will draw boundaries, and we'll actually be looking at locations. And then the year 1920 would actually be the transition for students who would be relocating in their schools. In your folders, I bring to your attention a couple of documents. One is our Hazelwood News that is published twice a year, and again, highlighting the over $30 million in scholarships for the class of 2017. We are challenging 18 to exceed that amount. And then another booklet that I'd like to bring to your attention that you'll hear reference as a part of the beginning of the strategic planning process, and that's Hazelwood NOW. And NOW stands for New and Innovative Programs, which we'll be looking at, options and opportunities for both students and adults, and of course, working together with parent, staff, and community to build coalition capacity, much like I'm here this evening to do. It highlights our three goals, improving student achievement, enhancing professional development, and increasing parent and community engagement. With that, I'd like to again extend an invitation to you to visit your schools, our schools, to volunteer, to participate in the strategic planning, and to serve on committees. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve and to speak with you, wishing you all happy holidays.
Thank you, and you also. John Englemeyer? John Englemeier?
Good evening.
Good evening, John Englemeier. 1281 Graham Road, Florissant, 63031. When I first came in this evening, I thought my miracle was answered when I looked and saw the chairs in front of the city council. But then I realized there was a presentation of the police officers, which, by the way, did a fantastic job. This evening, I'm here to speak about the past budget session, work sessions, and I have to commend the city council, several city councilmembers, on focusing on the future of our city finances. Jackie Magano, the president, deserves a medal for her courage to stand up for her councilmembers and the focus of the development of the city. Difficult is not only a word in the dictionary, but an attitude within the leadership of the city. I publicly announced Snyder as an effective mayor and frequently have asked for resignation on social media with no response. Lead, follow, or get out of the way. In the previous presenter from Hazelwood, she talked about the future, development, and strategic planning. Ironically enough, I brought with me my Kibbula letter, which is a professional letter for people in the tax business in terms of financial interest. In the first two pages, there are eight words: review your year, strategic planning, being flexible, planning, need to consider. Turn to the year for the year-end planning and making choices. Invest in a master plan. All of which came out of a newsletter called the Kibbula Letter. And yet, within our own city, sometimes I wonder about the 10-year plan or the future of the city. As the election bears down in April, I hope that the citizens of Florissant, whose wards are being elected, will diligently focus on not just the rhetoric, the political rhetoric of those individuals running for office, but ask for the actions of those words to be placed within this city for the future of our city and the development. My aspiration is to unite this city and making it a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin O'Donnell?
Good evening.
Good evening. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Or happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Name and address.
I only, I only hear, okay, I only have two minutes less than what Mr. Green had, so here we go. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, 63031, Ward 4. What I'm here, well, now that I heard Mr. Green speak, his five minutes for $24,000. I figured that I don't get anything, so, well. Anyway, I mainly came here to speak about the news release that I got, that I received from the mayor talking about vetoing this, the optional early retirement. And I heard, I read nothing but how this was bad for the city because it's four months that you gotta train somebody and everything, and it's gonna ruin the city. And he's gonna come back, and he's gonna hold the council on all this stuff. Well, I look at it this way. The election for mayor is in April. The new mayor, if it's not the incumbent, comes in when the votes are all counted and gets sworn in. He doesn't have four months to learn what his job is. And he's got the whole city, not just Public Works, or not just IT, or not just the Parks Department. He's got everything. And I think that it's really, I don't understand this. In that case, we should have a charter review and amendment to where there's at least a four-month period or three-month period between the election and when the mayor takes office so that he can know what's going on also. It's no different than what the mayor was, what he put out. And he also had, at the last meeting, he had his chance on the third and final reading to speak, just like I do right now. And he can speak before the vote, the final vote. He didn't speak. He sat there and just sat there, and he just stewed. I could see from the, from the, from the peanut gallery out here that he was just stewing. So, I mean, he did this as a political stunt, woe-is-me thing. It's not, it's not, it's not right, Mayor. I mean, it's, it's not right. I mean, you should have spoke that night of the, when the bill was being passed and had your voice then. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications of which there are none, and we will move on to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1712029.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405.135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance is amended that a public hearing will be held by the city council of the city of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, December 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To issue an amendment to B-5 ordinance number 7674 to allow for an addition of the Siteman Cancer Center and parking in an existing B-5 zoning district located at 1225 Graham Road. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing, but anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or 839-5142.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council, Honorable Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Mr. Hustle. For the record, my name is George Stock, and I'm with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers. And I have the privilege tonight to be here on behalf of BJC to request your consideration for approval of the Siteman Cancer Center at the Christian Hospital Northwest. Our request, as just read, is to, an amendment to the existing B-5 ordinance, number 6836, that would allow for the construction of the Siteman Cancer Center and associated parking in the existing B-5 zoning district. Joining me tonight, we have listed here a large development team, but specifically, who's here with me tonight from that is Mr. Brad Goshert, who's the Vice President of Operations of the Christian Hospital Northwest, Mr. Greg Muller, who's the Director with BJC Planning, Design, and Construction, as well as Ms. Nancy Coleman, also with Planning, Design, and Construction, and then Mr. Greg Brasher, who is with Governmental Affairs with BJC. So a little bit of history of the Christian Hospital Northwest. I won't go all the way back to the beginning, but I'll go back about 15 years. So it was, and it was ordinance 6836 that we're requesting to amend tonight. That was approved by the city council in 2003, which rezoned the property at 1225 Graham Road from an R4, single-family dwelling district to a B-5 planned commercial district for the development of the medical care and retail center. In 2004 and 2005, there was some plating that was done on the property to ultimately consolidate it into an 18.1-acre tract known as Northwest Healthcare Subdivision. There was an ordinance approved in 76, an ordinance number 7647 in 2009 that was for a building addition. And then there was another ordinance, 7674, in 2010 for an additional building addition. So our request for this property at 1225 is the proposed Siteman Cancer Center. It would be a one-story building totaling 36,232 square feet of building with future expansion to accommodate 8,270 square feet of additional space. We're also proposing an additional 152-car parking space. Some of the changes from the existing ordinance, just if we look at the right-hand side, what we're really doing is we're asking to increase the already-allowed 126,800 square feet to be increased to 138,000 square feet. We will be adding some additional trash enclosures, which you'll, some of these you'll see in a moment when I go to the site plan. Internal drives, there will be some modifications with those. And we will be increasing the minimum parking spaces from 453 to 579. Some of those spaces are 9 by 20, which was a requirement of a previous ordinance, but city code is actually 9 by 19, so we're gonna ask your consideration to allow us to build 9 by 19, which is in accordance with the city code. It also saves on the amount of asphalt paving and increases the green space. Lighting requirements, there, we have a lighting plan that is part of our package. Landscaping fencing, we also include. And then relative to stormwater, we adhere to the city of Florissant and the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District on stormwater improvements. So a little bit about the site. I know you're all familiar with 1225 Graham Road. But in the north direction, north-south, it's about 1,108 feet. In an east-west, it's 709 feet. And it abuts the city of Hazelwood municipal property line along the western, as shown in blue, adjacent to apartments. To the south is commercial property zone B3, and then our entire frontage along the eastern section is Graham Road. We do have two points of ingress and egress. One is active. It's the signalized intersection, which services the medical facility today. Another one is a non-signalized drive, kind of at the southern end of the property, which is encumbered with the cross-access easement, providing access to the properties of the south, and that will stay in place. We do plan to modify it. It is a challenging site. As many of you know, it's bifurcated by an MSD open drainage channel. It has low topography into the side, in the center of the site. So dealing with that, that channel and that topography is a challenge that we continue to work forward with on this project. So a little bit about the site plan. As we look to the northern portion, the lightly shaded shows you that existing medical office facility. It's 92,350 square feet, and it includes an emergency. Existing paving and parking is light-shaded and gray. So as we look to the south, we, you can see the proposed Siteman Cancer Center building, which is 36,232 square feet. There are future expansions located on the northeast corner and a future expansion located on the southwest corner. I mentioned a moment ago that we are adding some additional parking spaces. Those 153 spaces are outlined in the dark black. There will be an access drive along the northern, the western portion of the building. That will be an ambulance drop-off, and that will also be the service area, the trash enclosure. We have a little more green space from the northern property line. We have about 27 and a half feet, which is about 10 more feet than what exists on the existing. Everything's in compliance with the existing code, but with some grading transitions, we need to be back a little bit further. Under this plan, we're continuing a ring road. So as I mentioned a moment ago, we have the signalized intersection at the northern portion of Graham that will circulate through, and we'll have a ring road for vehicular traffic to service the pool of parking. In addition, there will be walkability from the proposed Siteman Cancer Center to the front door. So there's a lot of grading that's being done, grade changes to have ADA accessibility and deal with the stormwater. There'll be a number of stormwater features on the site in order to meet those regulations. Typically, we treat the water on the surface in bio-retention, which are rain gardens, and then they go into detention facilities, which under this plan are proposed to be underground. They may have to be above ground, and part of that relates to the former hospital and the foundation systems that were not totally removed from the site. They were cut off about three or four feet. So we continue to work on the engineering on the stormwater detention. But from a management standpoint, generally what you'll see is the rain gardens, which are planted and landscaped. So a little bit in context, just with the buildings and the neighbors around us, and give you a flavor of the amount of green space that will be there when we open. Again, the area, there is some area reserved for future parking, additional parking, when the building additions would come onto the Siteman Cancer Center. But this is really just to put it in context with the facilities that are around the site itself. So a little bit more about the parking. The existing building has 438 spaces. It's actually overparked. There's only 416 spaces required. So the Siteman Cancer Center requires an addition of 163. We don't want to be overparked, and so what we're proposing to do is use some of those spaces, and we would just build 152. The total required between the total campus is 579, and we would be constructing 579 spaces. A little bit about the site, and I know many of you are familiar with it. I mentioned the, the channel that runs through it. But what we do is we require it as part of the submission documents to have two site sections so that you can understand the topography a little bit. So we have a section AA, which is the east-west, and we have a BB, which is the north-south. And then when we go to the next slide, really what that's depicting is just showing you the green line that runs through the site, which is faint on the screen, is the existing topography. And then the darker black lines and the outline of the building. What we're seeing, you'll see two distinct numbers, 12 and a half feet, and you see 12.31. That's what we're actually elevating that portion of the site in order to be able to achieve positive drainage, in order to be able to get the building generally at the elevation of Graham Road from appearance. Now, when we do that, we have to import quite a bit of material. We have a requirement of about 53,000 cubic yards of material that we'll have to import to raise this portion of the site. So this is the photometric plan. The only thing I'll say about that is we have lighting. We have LED lighting, and we're in compliance whereby there's no illumination extended beyond the property lines. So the lighting is there for the safety of the patients, the employees that work there, and then just the general welfare of the community. Landscaping, we have a pretty extensive landscape plan, which is made up of canopy trees, evergreen trees, deciduous shrubs, evergreen shrubs. So again, there's, there's plantings around the perimeter of the building, and there's plantings within the parking lot. There's plantings along that western property line where we abut the western portion. And there's plantings to the south. The south portion of the building is generally a glass, which you'll see in elevation in a moment. Those are the infusion rooms. And so looking out to the south, that view, we really wanted to be over a green area for those patients that are going through treatment. So a little bit about the building. I mentioned it's one-story. It's predominantly brick. There is some standing metal-seamed roof that mimics the building that's to the north. And then there's a limited amount of cut stone, which is kind of the lighter tan material to accent the windows. But generally, on all four sides of the building is brick in accordance with the city's masonry ordinance. So that's a view, basically, standing, I guess, from the southeast, looking northwest. And then this is a view that would be signalized intersection on Graham Road, looking southwest, a little bit further in the site than actually the intersection. You're basically on the parking lot looking at it. But the parking is set up to try to be as patient-friendly as possible, focused around the front door of the facility, level slopes and grades. The operation is intended to be Monday through Friday. Employees arriving at 7:00 AM. There would be 15 to 25 employees on a daily basis. And then the hours of operation really for patients would be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they would be expecting approximately 60 patients a day. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions, and our entire team's here to answer questions that I may not be able to.
Mr. Shoga?
Thank you, Madam President. It's nice to meet you tonight, Mr. Stock. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. First of all, it's a lot of dirt we're bringing in, right?
Yes, it is.
Was that number 53? Is that what you said?
It's, it's 53,391 cubic yards.
Okay. Where's your construction entrance gonna be?
We would utilize the existing drive, the southern drive. So basically, the medical facility would need to stay in operation. So what we would do is utilize that existing drive to the south. We would build a rock wash-down area, staging area for all the construction, and keep all the construction traffic separate from the signalized intersection and the daily operation where employees and patients are coming to the existing building.
Your construction hours are roughly, what, 6 to 3, 7 to 3?
Well, I don't know the city of Florissant's ordinance, so if there's an ordinance on the start time, we're gonna follow that ordinance.
Okay.
But normally, it's 7:00 AM. I don't-
All right. What is your ballpark with the weather completion time?
Well, it's a spring start, anticipated with a construction duration of about 14 months.
Can you talk a little bit more about the, how the buildings will connect?
So the connectivity is really, well, one, there's the vehicular, and when we shade these, it doesn't, I don't know if it shows up that great, but, so I'll start down here. So we've got the signalized intersection that comes off Graham Road. You have the ability today to circulate to the drop-off of the existing building by just going to the right or left through a common drive that splits the parking, basically, the patient from the employee. Then when you get to this intersection, you have a choice. You can either continue to go straight, perhaps around to the north side of the existing building where the emergency room is, or go left to the front door of the Siteman Cancer Center. Now, the sidewalk that you see will, and unfortunately, it's shaded green right here. So the sidewalk would continue across. It's hatched here on the driveway, and some of the sidewalks dropped off here. But there'd be continuous sidewalk for patients, employees, to be able to walk between the buildings. There'll be signage relative to pedestrians crossing, stop signs, yield signs. But that's the internal between the two front doors.
It is one-story. I'm happy to see that. And it's all brick, like you said, except for one portion? Except for one portion? Future expansion, would that be Siteman-related or commercial?
It would be Siteman-related. This is very similar to the way the, one of the more recent Siteman Cancer Centers, which was constructed in South County, had planned for future expansion, and in the time that it opened, there has been two expansions. While there's no timeframe set for this particular one, they did occur on that other previous facility rather quickly.
Closing, I would just like to say thank you to BJC for filling that spot that's been vacant for several years, and I think it'll be a great addition to our city and to North County.
You're welcome, and thank you. It's our privilege to be here and proposing this facility.
Thank you. Mr. Kaputa?
Take me down, President. Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
I've worked on a couple BJC and Siteman centers throughout my career in the construction. I have a question. I know on previous BJC jobs, they have had PLAs on these jobs. Is this going to be a PLA job also?
I can't answer that question. I don't know.
We would consider that based on that...
Good, good.
...schedule.
Uh-huh.
And that's Mr. Mueller with Planning, Design, and Construction of BJC.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, welcome. You know, I agree with Mr. Sholdroff, be a great addition to the city and to that area right there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Stock, I have a question in regards to the topography issues that you were talking about before.
Yes.
Did BJC consult multiple people in terms of how to resolve that particular issue and how best to work that out? And can you tell us who you consulted with?
So relative to the grading of the site, a lot of it is really the function of that drainage channel. And so the authority on the drainage channel is the Metropolitan St. Louis Zoo District. And today, that drainage channel is open. For the most part, it contains the storms up to the hundred-year. The hundred-year comes out of the top of the channel. When we consider relocating it and closing, like we're doing under this particular plan, what happens in that channel is there's hydraulic losses, and so water wants to rise in its current elevations. And so as a result of that, to maintain a hundred-year flow path that doesn't go through the building, we literally have to raise the building such that that water under a hundred-year vent, because there's a very large tributary that's coming on to us from the south-southeast onto the property. And so basically, we're elevating that center portion of the site to about an elevation of five-thirty-four, or five-thirty-six, I'm sorry, five-thirty-six, and the hundred-year high-water elevation that is in and running above that on ground surfaces around five-thirty-four. So we're two feet above the hundred-year. So the consultation is really with the Metropolitan St. Louis Zoo District on those existing facilities in our office.
Okay. Is there any danger of maybe some of the, I know you're bringing in tons of materials, is there any danger of that material leaving because of, I guess, the water from underneath?
No. So as part of the design project, there's what an acronym called the SWIP, which is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and so there will be BMPs, Best Management Practices, put in place in order to contain that fill as it's coming in, in an undeveloped state and being compacted, and if a rain event were to come when they're bringing it in, that Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan has siltation control that's set up to keep that material silt from migrating off-site onto other properties.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Zayam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question about the southern intersection. Just to be clear, I take it it's not required to have a traffic signal, then?
It is not required, and so I, so it doesn't meet the Access Management Guidelines of St. Louis County, number one, as far as spacing from the existing signal. But I don't know for certain right here, but I suspect is that signal, since this property's already served with one, probably wouldn't meet the warrants that are necessary on a seven-day-a-week requirement for St. Louis County.
What is the distance between the two intersections? Do you know offhand?
It's about...
Six hundred feet, maybe, if I had to guess?
It's, I don't know the exact, probably about, that's probably pretty close, six hundred feet.
Do you think the traffic coming in and out of that intersection would be manageable? It won't be, like, too much or anything like that?
Yes. Well, I think you always have the option of utilizing the signalized intersection. Graham Road's fully developed, five-lane section with the continuous left-turn lane, so there's always a, the refuge, your left-turn lane's also a refuge bay for people that, you know, either they're making a left out, they cannot go north, they can stay in that lane. I would think most people that want to go north on a heavy day would probably go to the, they have a choice to the signalized intersection, use that for safety. But I think we're comfortable that the fact that it's a five-lane section, this is a secondary access, will probably be primarily in the peak hours, right-ins, right-outs, and any left turns would be at the signalized intersection.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I think everybody has kind of showed you a warm welcome. We're ecstatic that you're here in our great city. We hope that you do continue to build here in the future. Mr. Kaputa did bring up about a project labor agreement, which I am also with the Building and Construction Trades. We are labor-friendly here. Another thing I'd like to speak about, we have had, our last big construction project was at Walmart, which was on Lindbergh, and a lot of material was coming in and out of there, and that did turn into a big mud mess down there. So we are very strict about our roads being cleaned up and kept well, but that was a problem for us down on North Lindbergh when they built. So hopefully, we can keep that in mind when you guys do start, that we are going to have our eyes on you guys down there, because we are a very proactive council here. When that mud starts coming off them trucks, we're going to be getting phone calls about that.
Yeah, I understand completely, and I think, you know, moving forward, the general contractor will have a pre-construction meeting with the public works staff and the inspectors, and make sure that everybody understands on our side, you know, what the rules are and what the expectations are.
Sounds great. Another thing you brought up in one of your drawings there, I didn't see lights for the parking lot.
They're there. It just doesn't show up very well when I, photometric plan. So the light standards, when I zoom in, so if you look in the islands...
Okay.
There's a heavy, that's a light standard. That's a double-headed light standard.
So any additional ones, then, we would be added if it calls for it?
There's multiple light standards in the parking lot, both on the east side, which is the Graham Road side, and then there's also standards on that west side. Again, the trash enclosure is pretty obvious down on the right, it's the two boxes, and you just go up to the left, that circle, that would be a light standard, then you can see how they repeat themselves as they go to the north. So we've got a number of new light standards, and there's a limited amount of lighting on the building as well.
And I'm sure you guys have considered, because we do have an emergency room back there, on that entrance and exit, will that be a problem at all?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. On the, on this secondary driveway?
Yes.
This driveway here?
One of the drives, I think it's even marked for the emergency, for the emergency room in the rear?
Oh, yeah, okay. So, no, we're not making any changes to that? So that's this drive that goes basically to the north? Or, I'm sorry...
So during construction, we would not shove nobody more over to that entrance or exit during construction?
Correct. So on this drawing, these black diagonal lines, those are proposed contours, and so where they stop to the north, about where that red line is, B, that's the limits of construction. So everything is to the south. So there is no change in that driveway, the main drive that's servicing the existing medical office building or the emergency room on the west side. That would be undisturbed, open, left open, and the construction area will probably be fenced off more than likely during construction for safety reasons.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lee?
Yes, my questions have been answered. I just want to take a minute to thank Christian Hospital and BJC for their continued investment in the City of Florissant and the North County region. I think the addition of Siteman is going to be a well-utilized, I think you found that out in South County when they, when they, and I know we've continued to make changes at the Northwest Campus with the emergency room and so forth, and I just really, I really appreciate BJC and Christian's support and investment in our city. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor?
In addition to being grateful for the investment by Christian Hospital, I'm also very happy to see that they retained the stock firm. This was probably the biggest project that your firm has presented, including those that your father presented for many years before you.
Yes.
And congratulations on recently becoming a grandfather.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. It brings back a lot of memories. This is really a feel-good meeting. You got the festive, happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
We are festive. We are festive.
Your father was very good friends with my father, and I knew Mr. Bond very well. I ate lunch with him many, many times with my dad. I mean, they were good friends, wonderful man, so it's kind of memory lane. I used to get my hair cut next door as a little boy.
There you go.
Planning Commissioner asked me if I used to work here in the sixties. I said, "Well, I was about seven or eight years old then." That was my dad.
That was your dad, something to be proud of.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes, we are happy you're going to be building here. So before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? We do have someone who's going to come up and ask a question, if you want to just stand there, Mr. Stock.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. I like this mic now. I think Siteman, Christian Hospital are, their excellent choice of building the Siteman Center there, and I would like to see more development possibly across the street, where they might expand and make it more of a complex with, not Siteman, but Christian or BJC. But I think it's, there's no problem, I don't see any problem with the entrance, because I, Graham Road is my exit out of Florissant all the time, because Lindbergh is too crowded all the time, so I take, usually take Graham Road. And I very seldom get stopped at that signal, and I, there's very seldom people at that signal, at that, at the emergency hospital. So I don't think, I don't see any problem with it. And I keep looking at your little bow fell on the floor, but anyway, I think it's a great addition to Florissant, and I'd like to see more. And I congratulate BJC for choosing Siteman, Graham Road site as the site for Siteman. Okay? Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Evening, Council. Happy Holidays. Mark Schmidt, 1065 St. Anthony. Mr. Stock, I don't know if you can answer this, but as far as the building itself, will it be a self-contained Siteman meeting, full-on ecology, full radiation? Now, you're going to have your own CT and MRI machines, or are you going to utilize the ones across in the other building? You'll have your own CTs and MRIs and full radiation?
CT and radiation therapy and infusion.
Great, that's what I wanted to know. You're going to have any hospital beds at all inside?
Inside, yes.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Councilman Sholdroff moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Public hearing number seventeen, twelve, zero, three, zero.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing, the public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the Council Chambers at 9:55 Eastern, San Francisco, on Monday, December 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM, and the following proposition. To authorize a special use, permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Houdershall Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or 233-8395142.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
Good. My name is Wassim Abdeen. I am the owner of Sahara Mediterranean Grill over on 472 Houdershall Road in Florissant, Missouri. I'm here basically to request a special use permit for the restaurant. I don't see why I shouldn't get one, since there's a previous restaurants there, I believe three beforehand, and I've done a lot of improvements. I've changed a lot of fixtures and brought everything to code. Everything is all new inside, so I was hoping to get your approval tonight on behalf of Sahara Mediterranean Grill.
All right.
And if there's any questions, feel free to answer. I believe you guys all have a copy of everything that's going on in front of you, correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you very much. Welcome to Ward Number Three. It'd be good to have you up there. You are correct, that was a last-day pizza place for a while. Can you give me a little idea of your operation, what hours you will be working, what days of the week you'll be open?
Absolutely. So we're going to be open seven days a week, from 11:00 to 9:00 o'clock. We're going to be operating fully to in and out, basically for sit-down and take-out, mainly a take-out joint. We will also be doing Uber Eats as well as a lot of catering as well, so, and that's pretty much it, honestly.
Will there be selling alcohol in the presence?
No, sir, there will be no alcohol at all.
Very good. And your fare will be Mediterranean, Middle Eastern?
Yes, so I own three restaurants in San Diego, California. I grew up in this town, and I came just to visit my parents two months ago, and I seen that location, and I heard they were doing renovation to that whole plaza, so I was more than happy to come back and open something in my hometown.
And very good. And there's not a drive-through up there, correct?
No, definitely. I wish.
All right, very good. That's all I have, and welcome to Ward Three, and welcome to City of Florissant.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Parsons?
Actually, Madam President, my question was just asked. I was just wondering if you owned any other restaurants and...
I do, sir.
Okay. They're all similar to this restaurant?
They're all Sahara Mediterranean Grills, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, most of the new places that open up, we do try to insist on trash cans in front of the exits and entrance to your place.
Absolutely.
So we don't get so bad in the parking lots and different stuff like that. It helps out, helps us keep our city cleaned up.
Absolutely.
So I would appreciate you keep that in mind.
Most definitely.
Going to have a grease pit?
Yes. It's in the back, it's tucked away, so it's pretty small. It's not fairly large at all, so it's pretty, it stays pretty contained. It's clean, and they clean it out every four weeks, I believe.
And I'm glad you came back to your hometown and...
So am I. It's a little cheaper here.
Sure. No, but thanks.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Kaputa?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one question. What are Sahara fries?
Sahara fries are basically home-cut french fries, and they'll be loaded with either your choice of beef shawarma, chicken shawarma, or gyro meat, and with a garlic aioli drizzle with some parsley on top.
Oh.
It's very famous in San Diego. That's basically what I started my restaurant with. I was just selling Sahara fries, and I took off from there.
I know. I assume Mr. Egan didn't tell you that, you know, we do take samples and that moves us right along?
Absolutely. I don't think anyone doesn't like samples.
So your gyro's good?
Absolutely.
Oh, gyros, I've seen your broiler.
That's right, I got the real deals.
Good.
Nice.
Die for a good gyro.
Me too. Mr. Egan?
You know, I just wanted to alert the council that I will be asking for a very unusual three readings this evening, and the reason I'm doing that is because this has been a restaurant in the past, and it served as restaurant number one and number two. The City Council has canceled our second meeting in December, and I think it's unfair to our businesses to have them wait until, you know, middle, end of January on our account. So I will be asking for three readings. I am comfortable with this business and going to be walking in Ward Three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
We'll bring some back, over to my side. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none, Councilman Egan moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? This public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Council. Happy Holidays, guys. Thank you very much.
You also. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. We have bill number 9318. Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Ordinance amending Article 17 Residential Rental Real Estate.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Ordinance amending Article 17 Residential Rental Real Estate.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Good evening.
Good evening. John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road. As I spoke before on this particular bill, and once again, it's coming tonight for an amendment, can you explain to me the amendment and how that affects me as a landlord?
The effects was some more change, but, Mr. Hassel, do you mind?
I'll be happy to take a stab at it. There were a number of amendments that the St. Louis Realtors Association was suggesting for purposes of clarification, which we did that as well. There were a couple of amendments that, again, I would characterize them as for purposes of clarification, but they dealt with various circumstances that could give rise to a hearing on a suspension of revocation, clarifying that you were, that if you received such a notice, you would be entitled to a hearing. Those are the kinds of amendments that we inserted into this bill.
Okay. In reading the bill, and I know the words all come together as the same type, there's no indication of what the amendments are, either by underscoring or abolding of that. So when I read the bill, it was very confusing when understanding the amendment without looking at the prior ordinances.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. I didn't know what came with it. That wasn't in the...
Wasn't black.
If you understand what I'm saying.
Okay. It wasn't, but, I'm sorry. I didn't, I, I didn't know what came to you. I just know what got to us.
Right. I just pulled up the website. So again, when I look at the bill, I'm looking at what the reasons for the amendment is. And again, as you explained, now I understand the bill and how it applies to me as a landlord because of the applications.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we should clarify, this is substitute bill.
Yes.
Right. It is a substitute bill. Oh, I don't even have that on. It's a substitute bill. It's on here. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Substitute bill number 9318 passes and becomes ordinance number 8375. We have bill number 9334. Councilman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Mr. Sheldroth?
Thank you, Madam President. If the petitioner is here, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I have a couple of...
Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, council members. How are you today?
Good. The question I had was, last meeting, you were here, and there were some question about your license residential, excuse me, restaurant license from St. Louis County. Now, do you have that in hand? So you guys can open when you're...
No. No, sir. I haven't, I've done all of my paperwork except that.
Okay. I just wanted to make you aware of that because I think they meet in February. Is that right? I think the county...
You're as good as mine. I want to get through this first.
Yeah, I think the county meets, right. I think the county meets quarterly, and their next meeting for this body would be February, so in between now and then, you're going to be working inside and getting the place ready, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure you were aware of that, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Because we, people up here do get phone calls on various places, you know, do they have their, you know, their ducks in a row, things like that with county, with the county, and especially a restaurant. I want to, you know, I want to see you guys make a million bucks, but I want to see you do it the right way.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Five Aces Barbecue LLC DBA Five Aces Barbecue to allow for the operation of a restaurant located at 1752-1754 North New Florissant Road.
Councilman Hanky moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Sayam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed? Orders to authorize a special use permit to Five Aces Barbecue LLC DBA Five Aces Barbecue to allow for the operation of a restaurant located at 1752-1754 North New Florissant Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9334 passes and becomes ordinance number 8376.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a vetoed bill, ordinance number 8366. Councilman Lee?
Madam President, I move to override the mayor's veto of bill number 9326.
Seconded by Mr. Jones. Before we would vote, I would like to give a message from the council on this. The City Council would like to respond to the mayor's veto of the retirement incentive plan and his returning the 2018 budget unsigned. Both of these are related to the mayor's unwillingness to work with the city council to help reduce spending in the general fund. The retirement incentive plan was discussed and supported by the city council as the bill was developed. There were many changes made to the bill, and others suggested but not adopted. In the end, the city council voted nine to zero to pass the bill. Here is some information and benefits of the plan. Number one, it rewards our dedicated city employees who are already eligible for retirement under the current city retirement plan. Two, it allows upward mobility to other employees who wish to take on a new role within the city. Three, it helps to reduce costs and cut into the many years of deficit spending using our dwindling cash reserves. This reduction will not just be for this year, but for many years to come. There are safeguards built into the plan that will allow for essential positions to be filled immediately, or to allow others to temporarily assume the duties of the person retiring with an increase in pay. Had the mayor proposed a budget that reduced spending from the general fund and did not require continued use of our cash reserves, perhaps this plan would not have been adopted. The city council respectfully disagrees with the mayor's veto of the retirement incentive ordinance and will be voting to override the veto, that veto tonight. During the budget process in the fall of 2016, the city council heard from the finance director and recognized that there were issues with long-term sustainability of our budget and dwindling cash reserves. We passed that budget, but immediately started planning several budget work sessions in early 2017. The request of the city council to the mayor was to work with department heads and suggest ways to reduce spending in ways that would least impact the services provided to our residents. We recognized that there would have to be changes, but felt that department heads and staff were in the best position to tell us where those could be made. Throughout this process, the mayor failed to offer any suggestions or to work with his council to reduce spending. In fact, when the mayor submitted his 2018 budget, it increased general fund spending by more than $2.4 million. The city council hadn't held an unprecedented six meetings trying to work on the budget compromises with the mayor. At each of these meetings, we asked the mayor to work with department heads and come back with meaningful cuts in spending. At the fifth meeting, the mayor again came to us with nothing and said he stood behind his original budget as submitted. Only then did the council reluctantly make sweeping cuts to the budget, cutting 10% across the board for administration, 5% for public works, and further cuts from the Health Department. But once again, we asked the mayor if he would come back to the table with departments and offer alternatives to these drastic measures. During a sixth meeting, the mayor finally came to us with some small reductions. In the spirit of cooperation, the city council restored most of the budget cuts from the prior meeting. And while the final budget did not achieve the reduction we were hoping to see, it was adopted by the city council. As council president, I have already formed a budget committee with the unanimous support of the council. We will immediately start working on the budget for 2019. It is our ultimate goal to reduce spending in ways that least impact the services of our residents that they expect and deserve. We have a balanced budget that will preserve our dwindling cash reserves, not just for next year, but for the future of our great city. We will ask that this message be posted on the city website and sent out as a press release by the city council. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Sheldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item in new business is board appointments. I would like to reappoint Alan Minks to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move for approval.
Seconded by Mr. Sheldroth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The appointment is made. Do you have one? I'm, wait a minute. There you go, Mr. Sheldroth.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to reappoint Terry Ryder, 415, excuse me, 450 St. Christine, to the Citizens' Participation Committee.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The appointment is made.
I have a... It's okay. I would like to reappoint James Hunt, 1340 St. Bernadette, to the Personnel Commission.
Seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The appointment is made.
Thank you.
Do you have one? Okay. There we go.
I'd like to thank Councilman Egan for nominating Jacob May, and I'd like to appoint him to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Seconded by Mr. Egan, I'm sorry, Councilman Egan moves to approve the mayor's...
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
The appointment is made. Is that it? Next, we'll move to request. Councilman Sayam moves to accept the application for a transfer of a special use permit number 7592 from Gamble Inc., doing business as Little Caesar's Pizzato, the Beck Group Pizza. I'm sorry, my, my print is wrong.
Sorry.
To the Beck Group LLC, doing business as Little Caesar's Pizza for the operation of a carryout restaurant located at 2632 North Highway 67. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to say something? You were just approved.
I'm just here in case.
There you go. Now, motion carried.
Eating more pizza.
There we go. Get a pizzato, because I'm not exactly sure what that is.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah. Get a pizzato, because I don't know what that is.
Sometimes we just type things.
That's right. Just keeps going.
There you go. Okay.
So, do you want to speak before the next request of, we have a liquor license request, Mr. Hanky?
Right. Just for correction to the agenda, this is in Ward Nine.
Which one?
It was recently moved over from, from the last, when we changed our boundaries. It didn't come up earlier on this business, but this business is now actually in Ward Nine.
Ward Nine, the Aces Barbecue.
Right.
Gotcha.
So we have Mr. Sayam is moving to approve, you all right? Okay. Sorry. A request for a full liquor license, liquor-by-the-drink license for Five Aces Barbecue located at 1752-1754 North New Florissant Road. Seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Caputa?
No.
Sheldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Egan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolutions. Resolution number 1,000.
Resolution of the City of Florissant adopting the St. Louis Regional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Resolution of the City of Florissant adopting the St. Louis Regional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Lee moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Resolution of the City of Florissant adopting the St. Louis Regional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Hutter Shell Road.
Councilman Lee moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Shuldorff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Hutter Shell Road.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Hutter Shell Road.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Here.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Hutter Shell Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Good evening.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, 63031, Ward 4. I have nothing against three readings tonight on this, but I expected three readings on the site man, because the site man is basically all the work they put in on it, they want to move ahead on it, and I just, I... I'm fed up. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the... Oh, there is a light on. I'm sorry. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Kevin, the site man, as far as I know, didn't request a third reading. Thanks.
To answer that, what the site man is doing is construction, and there is, and we normally do not do three readings. With this bill, the only reason three readings is done is because it was already a restaurant before. And so instead of transferring the special use permit, the business was closed for six months, so now they had to go for another permit. Had it gone from one to the other, we wouldn't be here. So that's the only reason they're getting it. So... And I don't think site man's starting until spring, right? So they'll have plenty of time?
Thank you, Madam President. I would, a magnitude of a project like this, I would not be supporting three readings. It's built from the ground up. I mean, the process needs to take its normal, normal procedure.
I agree. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9340 passes and becomes ordinance number 8377. Bill number 9341?
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit number 7592 from Gamble Incorporated DBA Little Caesar's Pizza to Beck Group LLC DBA Little Caesar's Pizza, located at 2632 North Highway 67, for the operation of a carryout restaurant.
Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, Joe had already said it, but I was going to move for three readings tonight for the same reason as Mr. Egan wanted to do for Sahara Mediterranean, because we're canceling our meeting later this month, and they would not get another chance until January 8th after that. So I'd like to move for a second reading.
Is that what your... Do your lights on for... Okay. All right. There we go. Councilman Sayam moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit number 7592 from Gamble Incorporated DBA Little Caesar's Pizza to Beck Group LLC DBA Little Caesar's Pizza, located 2632 North Highway 67, for the operation of a carryout restaurant.
Councilman Sayam moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Egan. Roll call, please.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit number 7592 from Gamble Incorporated DBA Little Caesar's Pizza to Beck Group LLC DBA Little Caesar's Pizza, located 2632 North Highway 67, for the operation of a carryout restaurant.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Hutter Shell Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Good evening.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, 63031, Ward 4. I have nothing against three readings tonight on this, but I expected three readings on the site man, because the site man is basically all the work they put in on it, they want to move ahead on it, and I just, I... I'm fed up. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the... Oh, there is a light on. I'm sorry. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Kevin, the site man, as far as I know, didn't request a third reading. Thanks.
To answer that, what the site man is doing is construction, and there is, and we normally do not do three readings. With this bill, the only reason three readings is done is because it was already a restaurant before. And so instead of transferring the special use permit, the business was closed for six months, so now they had to go for another permit. Had it gone from one to the other, we wouldn't be here. So that's the only reason they're getting it. So... And I don't think site man's starting until spring, right? So they'll have plenty of time?
Thank you, Madam President. I would, a magnitude of a project like this, I would not be supporting three readings. It's built from the ground up. I mean, the process needs to take its normal, normal procedure.
I agree. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit number 7592 from Gamble Incorporated DBA Little Caesar's Pizza to Beck Group LLC DBA Little Caesar's Pizza, located 2632 North Highway 67, for the operation of a carryout restaurant.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit to Abdeen LLC DBA Sahara Mediterranean Grill to allow for the operation of a restaurant in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 472 Hutter Shell Road.
Bill number 9341 passes and becomes ordinance number 8378. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish my mom a happy birthday today. We took her out for dinner last night, and we found a remarkable thing. I'm going to be 62 next month, and my mom told us that she's 59, so kind of a remarkable lady. So happy birthday, Mom.
Mr. Shuldorff?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to congratulate Ken Fowler, resident, Ward 5, for his proclamation tonight. I would like to let everybody know that they're going to need to use some patience and some caution, starting tomorrow on New Florissant Road near Bangor Park. MSD has a 10-day project that will begin every night, but Saturday and Sunday, at 5:00. And hopefully, it will only be 10 days. Please be careful driving around there. I'd like to wish all the residents of City of Florissant happy holidays. And on a serious note, I need to apologize to Mr. Henke. Last meeting, I lost my composure, and I got upset concerning an issue. And I also apologize to this body and to the residents of the city. I shouldn't have acted like that. Finally, I would like to wish my wife happy anniversary, 35 years. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Back on, Mr. Henke?
Yeah. First and foremost, Keith, you didn't have to apologize to me. It's all part of this. We've gone through, we just went through budget process. You didn't have to apologize to me for that. Thank you for the apology, though, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Fowler already left, and he was one of my buddies. I always stopped in up there at JFK, and a lot of good stories from that gentleman. Hate to see him go. I'd like to give a shout-out to Team You Guys. It's right down the street. I've been there quite frequently in the last two weeks, feeding them a lot of canned goods from the North County Labor Club and the North County Democrats. A pretty good haul of canned goods, but they always need more, so got any change, extra canned goods at the house after Thanksgiving, after Christmas, please take them down there, you guys. I think that's all I got to say.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. This past Saturday, my lovely wife celebrated her 37th birthday. Happy birthday, Kelly. On a more serious note, last week, a dear friend of mine, who I'd watched growing up since he was about eight years of age and works for the Arnold Police Department, was shot in line of duty by a coward who shot him in the back of the head and has changed his and his family's life forever. I sit on the board of Shield of Hope, which is a charitable arm of the Fraternal Order of Police. The O'Connor family has requested that we do a GoFundMe, which we have set up for the long-term use of the O'Connor family and for Ryan. He has a very, very, very long road recovery. Shield of Hope's 501(c)(3) recognized. So if you get on your Facebook page, you can go to GoFundMe and search "Shield of Hope Ryan O'Connor." It'll pull you up, and I ask you, open your wallets and your hearts this year, and keep Ryan and the O'Connor family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, if you own a firearm, make sure you secure them. Don't leave them in your vehicle where they can be stolen. Make sure you keep them firearms secured in your houses. Make sure you join in Neighborhood Watch program. City has a very, very aggressive and proactive Neighborhood Watch program, so I suggest that all the citizens in the city try to join up for Neighborhood Watch. And if you're out Christmas shopping and holiday shopping, make sure you're alert. Be alert of your surroundings and where you're at. Make sure if you see any suspicious persons, make sure you call the police wherever you're at. And another thing, I would like to say something about the mayor's letter that went out about the veto of the retirement benefits, and it was pretty bad that he came down to threaten. It's basically a threat to the city council that it's our fault of what happened, or what could happen, as he says it in his letter. I take that as an insult, being threatened like that. Not just myself, but all city councils, all nine of us have been threatened with this. And I think it was a low blow, honestly. I think it was piss-poor, and I think we need an explanation and an apology from the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and to be safe when you're out here on the holidays. Don't do any drinking and driving. You don't want to have to hire an attorney like Mr. Hustle. I'm sure he's hourly great and is going to be very excessive for these things. But in any case, be safe. Think before you're drinking, and don't drive again. And also, when New Year's comes up, you know, make sure that you're not shooting your guns up in the air. Those things have to come down, and of course, people can get hurt. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the chief to come forward just for a moment, because I can't reach you from there. I'd like to pat you on the back. Before I do that, though, the chief and I would like to implore our residents to not use fireworks on New Year's Eve, nor discharge any firearms. What goes up will come down, and it could kill somebody, could kill a child, it could kill an adult. So please refrain from using fireworks. They are illegal in the City of Florissant, and please refrain from using firearms. But the thing I want to, and this is, the chief has a news release on this very issue. It was very well done. But what I wanted to pat you on the back for our chief is that at the last Municipal League meeting, the Municipal League, I asked them to pass by acclamation, pass the unanimous endorsement of the police standards, which you are chairman of the committee. I want to commend you for your work. It's been endorsed by the City Managers Association, by the Municipal League, and by Police Chiefs Association. And just thinking back, where this started, three years ago, where something was trying to be forced down our throats, and we were able to be proactive and come up with the standards that's going to lead the whole country, because as I understand it, we're already at 25% accredited, and most areas of the country are only standing at 5. And in a short period of time, it'll be 100%. And I want to commend you for your hard work in that. Thank you, chief. Thank you. Now, in all the Christmas highlights, we got the, we had the, we got the Christmas lights and the tree disposal program. Meridian will be picking up your trees after Christmas. Just put them out at the same time you do your yard waste. And then we will also be having a Christmas light disposal down at our Public Works Garage. Wanted to thank everybody for helping us to light the holiday lights out in front of City Hall.